All right, welcome back from our lunch break. We're going to go ahead and move on to our next untimed item. 7.3, consideration of agreement between County of Lake and Sacramento Behavioral Health Care, Behavioral Healthcare Hospital LLC for acute inpatient psychiatric hospital services and professional services associated with acute inpatient psychiatric hospitalizations for fiscal year '25 and '26. And it looks like we have Christine Andrus on Zoom to present.
Good afternoon. So yes, this item is for one of our behavioral health facilities. Let me pull it up. It's a cute psychiatric facility that we've been using for a long time. We served 18 unduplicated clients at this facility last year.
All right.
Any questions?
I do have a question. You said they were there last year. I thought for some reason this was a new one. Do you guys have yet, because it's been approximately three months, a final report from last year that I can request to get some data and some outcomes and whatever other data they were able to provide?
I can see. I just, I know from my data that we had, this is a cute psychiatric facility and that we've, we placed 18 clients there.
Okay. Because, just a correction, it's a general comment. From my understanding of behavioral health, they are typically diagnoses that through treatment can be brought back into a more stable environment, unlike other types of diagnosis that are permanent types of diagnosis, like dementia or things like that. And so, understanding how, and I know that it's different for everybody, but still understanding how facilities are doing as far as providing treatment that leads to people being more functional and more stabilized is always my goal and always looking to better understand how facilities are doing. And so that's why I was asking about any other reports. So I'll be asking for that report. I thought it was a brand new one, so I didn't ask.
Oh, I want to say it was called Aurora Behavioral Health before and they changed the name to Sacramento. That's probably why it looks different.
Gotcha. Appreciate that.
All right, is there any public comment? Okay, I'll close public comment and bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve agreement between the County of Lake and Sacramento Behavioral Healthcare Hospital LLC for acute inpatient psychiatric hospital and professional services for fiscal year '25-'26 in the amount not to exceed $300,000 and authorize the Chair of the Board to sign.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. We will move on to our next item, 7.4. Consideration of agreement between the County of Lake and Vista Pacifica Enterprises Incorporated for adult residential support services and specialty mental health services in the amount of $750,000 for fiscal year '25-'26. Christine.
Yes, this is another, this is a step down facility out of an acute psychiatric facility. So this would be a next level down. This one facility provides a little bit more specialized services for more unhealthy mental health clients. And I believe in the note it said how many people. Most of these clients that go to this placement are conserved clients in this residential placement. And we do step them out of this facility to a lower level of care when needing, but this is mostly like long-term placement skilled facilities.
Okay. Supervisor Sabatier.
So I don't have the math right in front of me and appreciate you mentioning that this is for more long-term conserved folks. And we have to provide some sort of placement somewhere for these folks. But I do have to at least mention my concern. The cost is growing. We're looking at about $120,000, $130,000 per person when I did the math of what you spent last year and the number of unduplicated counts was there. So just wanted to share that concern especially, and I recognize that services are very specific, but I remember we were doing private for somebody that we had a special situation that social services brought to us, and I think we were spending like $5,000 a month. Again, the level of care that was provided is different, how it was paid was different because it wasn't through Medi-Cal. But in my opinion, some of my concerns that I'm sharing today is, I think, part of the reason we're having some issues at the federal level as to how much money is going into these programs because the cost is just enormous.
Go ahead.
How many days in total are, on average, are they staying in these two facilities? Because at $130 per person, how many days does that?
So the first facility, Sacramento Behavioral Health, it's an acute psychiatric placement. So most of the time they're in there from anywhere from three to 14 days. And then they step down to a lower level of care, whether that is to go home or to a low, a level of care like this. And then these facilities, they can be there the rest of their life. This is a skilled nursing facility, so depending on the client and their age and what their, what their needs are, they could be there for a long time.
Thank you.
We try to get them out of there and step them down as fast as we can, and so do they. So IMD facilities, that level of care, they try to get them out of there in less than six months.
All right. I'll open it up for public comment. Bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, if there's nothing further, I'll approve, I'll move to approve the agreement between the County of Lake and Vista Pacifica Enterprises Incorporated for adult residential support services and specialty mental health services in the amount of $750,000 for fiscal year '25-'26 and authorize the Board Chair to sign.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries 4-0-0. Next, we have 7.5, consideration to adopt resolution authorizing the Behavioral Health Director to sign the standard agreement 24-40117 with the California Department of Healthcare Services to bond BH CIP round one, launch-ready program funding. Christine.
So yeah, this is our grant that we were awarded, the B-Chip Grant, to do our capital project on our South Shore Clinic. This is the agreement for us to move forward with that project of remodeling the building in Clear Lake.
All right. Any questions? Open it up to the public for comment. Bring it back to the board for action.
So Chair, move to adopt the resolution.
I second that.
I offered.
Resolution has been offered.
Used the wrong word, I apologize.
Supervisor Owen?
Aye.
Supervisor Espatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Osmussen?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes. And so the resolution passes 4-0. All right. That was 7.5, right?
Yeah.
7.6, consideration of the agreement between County of Lake and Manzanita House for adult residential support services in the amount of $300,000 for fiscal year '25-'26. And Christine, you're up again.
So this is a facility that is actually in Lake County that we, is the next step closer of getting our clients home to getting them to their permanent housing independently. We've had this facility for a very long time. And it is also for a majority of our conserved clients.
Supervisor Sabatier.
So I will be approving this today, and again, just want to share a concern. This is not the only one on this agenda that says that this will be paid for through realignment and Medi-Cal reimbursements. We are seeing some, number one, realignment is not fine, is very finite. Unfortunately, it's not really growing. It's getting smaller and things are getting more expensive. So we're getting that really squeezed. And we have a situation where we just had a letter that we wrote in hopes that the state doesn't take back some money. I believe it was approximately $1.2 or $1.3 million due to some issue that occurred at the state level. But they're coming back to us. to some issue that occurred at the state level, but they're coming back to us. We're requesting that money. Hopefully that will not happen, but that if it does happen, what we were told or more most likely, what we were told most likely would happen is that we would use the realignment dollars to help pay that back. And of course, that's a future conversation. My problem is that, my concern is, is that it's a finite amount. We've already are involved in a situation with a loan that is a struggle to repay because of the way that the processes are in place on how you can use the reimbursement dollars that you receive. I have these contracts that come before me and I feel like I'm not helping by just saying yes without a better understanding of how much left is in realignment as we say yes to this today. What are the, like, there's just so many questions on reimbursements and money, and I feel like I'm saying yes and contributing to the problems that may occur in the future versus just saying yes because this program is needed for our community because if we have to borrow money or run out of money, that also hurts. So I, I just needed to express that I, I'm going to say yes today, but I really wish we could have a much deeper, in-depth conversation to better understand our situation.
Just one, just a quick question. So with this facility here, is it one where if we were bringing somebody out of, say, the, the last one we approved, Pacifica, is that like the next level down? Is that what you meant?
Yes, that, that, that is correct. We would bring them from a facility like that, that is more higher acuity and down into, this is the last level before we'd move them into their own residential home. I do want to make a correction on this, Bruno, sorry. This particular contract is not covered by Medi-Cal dollars or realignment dollars. It's actually covered by our mental health block grant. Because it is a local boarding care facility, we can use those fundings to pay for that, and that is where we pay for this out of, as well of our, as well as our MHSA dollars because these are our full-service partnership clients that are engaged in services within our department as well that are located at this facility. Once they're back in, in our county, we can provide services, billable services to the state while they are at this facility.
I appreciate that. That only exacerbates the confusion since that's not what the memo stated.
Yeah.
Thank you for the clarification.
Sorry for the confusion.
But I think we also do have limited funds when it comes to MHSA.
The, yes, this is part of our three-year plan and it is budgeted out of our three-year plan to pay for this contract.
Thank you.
All right, I'll open it up for public comment. Bring it back to the board for action.
With nothing further, I move to approve the agreement between the County of Lake and Manzanita House for adult residential facility services for fiscal year twenty five, twenty six, in the amount of three hundred thousand, and authorize the board chair to sign.
I'll second that.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four zero. Next, we have seven point seven, consideration of agreement between County of Lake and Windsor Care Center of Sacramento, a mental health rehabilitation center for adult residential support services and specialty mental health services for fiscal year twenty five, twenty six, in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars, and authorize the chair to sign. Christine.
So this is a new facility to us. It's an MHRC, which is the next level of stepping people out of the state hospital, which takes our realignment dollars, like Bruno says, like, we're, we need to bring our realignment dollars back into house. And so this is a facility that we're contracting with so that we can step our clients out of the state hospital into these facilities to, so that they can graduate. And this, this facility is up to a six-month facility is what they, their goal is to get somebody rehabbed and out of that facility within six months into a lower level of care.
Any questions from the board? Public comment, I'll open it up. Close public comment, bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve the agreement between the County of Lake and Windsor Care Center of Sacramento, MHRC for adult residential support and specialty mental health services for fiscal year twenty five, twenty six, in the amount not to exceed five hundred thousand dollars, and authorize the board chair to sign.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four zero zero. Thank you, Christine, for presenting that.
Thank you.
All right, I think that covers everything in the open side of the agenda. We're going to go to closed session, and that would be eight point one, public employee discipline dismissal release. Eight point two, public employee appointment pursuant to government code section five four nine five seven B one, appointment of interim chief public defender. Eight point three, which is going to be pulled, will be pushed to the fourth of November, which is public employee appointment pursuant to government code section five four nine five seven B one, interviews for animal control care and control director, appointment of animal care and control director, so that'll be November fourth. Eight point four, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation pursuant to government code section five, five four nine five six point nine D one, FERC proceeding number P seventy seven Potter Valley Hydroelectric Project. And eight point five, concert, conference with legal counsel, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to government code section five four nine five six point nine D two E one, two potential cases. With that, we'll go into closed session. Supervisor Sabatier?
Yeah, just real briefly, I know you said that we're going to move eight point three. I'd like to at least open for a small amount of dialogue about that in our closed session rather than remove it entirely.
And we?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So your board can, while the item is pulled, can certainly bring it back in. It would, it would be not pulled at that point in terms of the status of that item number in eight point three, if your board is willing to or has determined to conduct discussions as it relates to that item. So essentially, the status would be not pulled and, and your board can.
Well, I think that you can probably talk to CAO about it.
I wanted to talk to the board about it.
I mean, I don't know if you guys are good with it. I've really, I can wait, but.
I don't have a problem if he wants to bring something up.
It's related to it, so it's, yeah.
All right, so we aren't pulling eight point three. How do I state that? Or do I just say?
So it would just be determination by, by your board to not pull item eight point three, which is captioned as public employee appointment pursuant to government code section five four nine five seven B one, interviews of animal care and control director and appointment of animal care and control director.
All right. Back on, so we'll, we'll go ahead and go to closed session. Right? Good? Right.
Seven minutes?